From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason?
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggert?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
And Supervisor Perez?
Here.
All right, thank you so much. First thing we are going to do, first of all, welcome to the Tuesday, June 16th, 2017, 2:00 PM session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to ask Margot Rizon, Chief Deputy County Counsel, to report on any actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman Scrivner, Supervisors. The closed session was held for items number 57 and 58 on the morning agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Ms. Rizon. Next item on our agenda is going to be our consent agenda. If you'd like to follow along with our agendas today, they are available printed out in, at the two tables near the entrance and exits. And all items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I'll read the consent agenda items for our PM session. First, we have, starting on page two, items four and five are on consent. On page three, items seven through 10 are on consent. On page four, all items 11 through 15 are on consent. Page five, all items 16 through 18 are on consent. On page six, items 19 through 21 are on consent, and also item 23. On page seven, all items 24 through 31 are on consent. Page eight, items 32 through 34, as well as items 37 through 39, are on consent. And then finally, on page nine, all three items 40 through 42 are on consent. So I'll ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for any items to be removed or a motion to approve.
Motion on consent.
Second.
Hey, we have, a hand went up on the, in the back, where? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Scrivner, I've never been here before.
Come on, come on forward. Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're happy to, happy to clarify for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Ms. Perez. Mr. Scrivner, I've never been here before, so I'm learning all this process.
Sure.
So as I'm going through this, please bear with me. The last item, number 42, claims and lawsuits filed, so would I be able to speak up about that?
Yes, absolutely. If you want to speak on, speak on that item, then, then please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I can wait.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it in listed sequence.
Okay.
Well, actually, no, I'm sorry, yeah, no, go ahead right now, I think you're the only one. I'm sorry. Yeah, what was, what was it that you wanted to speak to on that item?
I filed a lawsuit against the County of Kern regarding retaliation and harassment that I have been a victim of, resulting from harassment from Kern County probation and the Sheriff's Department. I have brought matters to the attention of Mr. Maggert's office several times, and he is well aware of this. Of course, when I filed my claim with the county, within five days, I received a notice that I was not giving enough information. So I filed another claim today with you guys, giving you more information.
Okay.
I want to make you aware that you will be receiving notification from the California State of California, EEOC, that they are looking into Kern County probation for harassment and retaliation on my behalf. I've been a victim of harassment and retaliation for 10 years, and I don't want this to happen. I believed in this county. This is a good county, I was born here. We shouldn't do this to our people.
And, and ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if you, if we got your name, did you?
Nadine Escalante.
Escalante?
Yes.
I said, Ms. Escalante, so I'm, Ms. Right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
One more thing, sir.
Please.
The first time that you guys voted on my discrimination with hostile work environment and harassment with Kern County probation was in September of 2008. It was a Board of Supervisor meeting, notes, you can see it online.
In 2008, you said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rizon, I, I think that the issue that, that she has, has brought up is not going to prevent us from approving that item, and I don't think we need to have that, have that, have that item pulled, but I'd like to ask your opinion on that.
Chairman Scrivner, it looks as though she has filed a claim against the county, which has been received by my office, and, check the date, is currently being reviewed, currently being reviewed and investigated and handled with my office, and a, and a response would be forthcoming from my office in, in due course.
Okay, because the requested action on item 42 is to receive and file, and so, okay, well, thank you, and, and so now I will, I'll return to the board and ask if any of the board members, once again, would like to remove an item. I think, do we have a motion for approval already? Okay, from Supervisor Gleason, do we get a second? Okay, so we have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Supervisor Perez, did you want to speak?
Thank, thank, I just, thank you so much, Chairman. I just want to make sure that we provided some direction to the Speaker, Ms. Escalante, regarding what next steps are, what should she expect to hear from the county? You know, what should she expect next?
Supervisor Perez, through the chair. It looks like the claim was filed on May 26th and received by my office roughly about, it looks like that same day. And when it was first received into my office, it would be assigned to, first, Tom Newell, the claims manager, litigation manager, to look at the merits of it, who would consult with Charlie Collins, the litigation chief, as well as Mr. Nations, and an initial assessment made, perhaps some investigation. And then the claim will either be accepted or denied within 60 days, I believe.
So within 60 days of the May 26 filing, she'll receive some information from the county regarding our position or County Council's, County Council's position regarding the allegations. So this sounds like it's in the early stages of the investigation. Within 60 days, she'll receive some correspondence from the county.
Supervisor Perez, through the chair, yes, that, that is correct. She will receive some notification.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Escalante, did you have an additional question of us? You, you want to respond to that? Okay, I'll allow you to do so if you like to come forward, and then if you would like anyone from County Council's office to come and speak with you further, I can make that request as well. So come on down if you'd like. Appreciate you bearing with us, I've never had this, this particular item pulled before.
Thank you.
So we're kind of, I was, I was working my way through it.
I'm learning, I'm learning the process.
Thank you.
To answer your question, Ms. Perez, I've already received a response, I received a response in amazing time of five days. I dropped off notice on Friday, I received it on Thursday, May 30th, stating that it was not going to be taken up. I have a copy of it with me. I have refiled as of this morning, per my attorney, and also from the notes that I have received from the EEOC. And if the County Council wishes to look at it, you are welcome to look at it, but your copy will be being mailed to you immediately from EEOC. So I understand the process, and I thank you so much for being kind enough to explain it and take the time and asking, and you know, just, we all learn through things to acknowledge that, we make sure that everybody knows what the process is, because I'm learning these things through trying to just make the harassment stop at my work. And it's sad when you have to learn how to make something stop just because you want peace at your work.
You're still working there.
No, no, I no longer work for the probation department, I no longer work at Juvenile Home. All my coworkers, all my children that I took care of at Juvenile Home, and I call them children, they're little criminals, they were my blessings. I loved my career, and God has me doing something else, but God knows where my heart is, and I loved my job.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Perez. And so we'll move on now to the next item on our agenda, back to page two, after we approve the consent calendar, which will be item number one, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, they may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at later meetings. So I'll ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make a public statement to us at this time? Please come forward.
I wanted to read the scripture with you first. It's from the Book of Amos, chapter 5, 24. Do you know what I want? I want justice, oceans of it. I want fairness, rivers of it. This is all I want, this is all I want. This is what our Father God wants for us. He does not want the injustice that is done in this county. Like I said, I was born in Kern County. I was born to a Native American woman and a black man. They were young, they had problems. My dad abused my mother. I wind up being taken away unfairly from my mother, who was young, 19, trying to raise two children on her own and put into our Child Protective Services care, where I was physically abused at the age of three. My sister was burned. We told our mother during visits, and then this county retaliated against my mother, taking us from her. On my mother's dying bed, October 15th, 2016, she begged for my forgiveness. I told you, I always forgave you. I knew I was taken from you. You didn't give me away. I was loved, my parents married, they were happy to have me, I was a blessing to my family, a blessing to my family now. My family that adopted me, they were amazing people, good Catholic family. And I have always been strong in my faith. Today, I went to the Christian store, the Catholic store, and I found a prayer card of a saint that I never knew, that's Native American. I am asking this county to please start addressing the issues of abuse. We are not asking for retribution, we just want transparency. We don't want any more victims. We, I don't want to be, I know I'm not a victim, I'm a survivor. I want to help others, I want to help this county. I love this county. I loved my career. I believe in what it does. I believe in the goodness that is behind it, but we have to get rid of the clutter of the ugly. And so I ask you, please, to take this into consideration as we start seeing these things come out, to please, please pray for this county, and please start making some changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Do we have any other members of the audience would like to make a public presentation? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on then to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Gleason?
Yes, I do have something. Couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation here about hot park and what we were doing with it, and how we were going to charge people money for parking, how we're going to recoup some dollars and charge people fees for, for visiting our precious park. And a long conversation ensued, and as a result of that conversation and the public input, our CAO's office has agreed to develop a, come forward with a strategy on how we're going to manage hot park, what we're going to do with it, and how we can take not only hot park, but our whole park system of Kern County together and develop a strategic vision, a strategic plan for putting it to work and being at the type of place that we all enjoy going to and is worthwhile. I mean, we either treasure these places, or we don't. And we haven't previously, and the CAO's effort is to design a strategic vision to determine how much treasure we place on it, and if we do place on it, then let's treat it like that, and let's come up with a plan to save our parks. So the first step on this vision is a, is a handout that, I don't know if it's available to everybody, but you'll, you'll see these around, they're going to put them in the newspaper? They'll, but we'll do the proper public outreach, so you'll get them, and we're going to have three meetings scheduled to get public input to help us determine what we want to do, and how we want to shape, and how we want to invest and, and take care of our parks. The first meeting is Tuesday, June 13th, at the East Bakersfield Veterans Hall. It's Tuesday, June 13th, and from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Everybody know where the East Bakersfield Veterans Mall Hall is, it's at 2101 Ridge Road in Bakersfield. The second meeting is Monday, June 19th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the Board of Supervisors Chamber, it's right here, that's Monday, June 19th, 6 to 8. And then the third meeting is in Lamont, at Tuesday, June 27th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the David Head Center, at 10300 San Diego Street in Lamont. So this is the first step of the CAO's plan to develop a strategy, a comprehensive review on our park system, and let's turn it into something that we want it to be. So I hope, encourage everybody to participate fully in this effort. Thanks to the CAO's office for getting this going. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Gleason, thanks, thank you for bringing that to our attention and for the CAO's effort, and everyone who, at the county and on this board that's had such a passion and interest in that issue. Are there any other board member announcements or reports from my colleagues? Okay, I, I have one. We have a little additional decoration at the clerk station today. The board bought the clerks some flowers to recognize the fact that today is her 10th anniversary of being clerk of the board. We appreciate her, all the departments do, she touched, her, her department and all of her staff, they touch each and every department here at the county, get our agendas ready. And so Kathy, congratulations, and on behalf of the board, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I much appreciate it.
We're lost without you, Kathy. Don't go anywhere.
All right, thank you, everyone, for indulging us for a moment on that. Okay, next item on our agenda is item number three, under departmental request. This is under the Planning and Natural Resources Department. We have our department head, Lorelei Oviette. This is a request to accept in-kind donation of goods from IKEA valued at $1,500 toward the Erskine Fire Mobile Home Unit Welcome Gift Baskets. And Ms. Oviette, can you tell us a little bit more about this item?
Good afternoon, it's with great pleasure that I come today. There are many great things that happen in the county with our 8,000 employees, and I want to make sure that our employees are recognized for this wholly voluntary contribution that was made for Welcome Baskets. I certainly don't want to step over the entire MHU team. This was a devastating fire, it burned more than 48,000 acres and destroyed 295 homes. As you know, the MHUs were donated to the county, and we put together a team. We could not say enough about Chief Marshal and Ms. Armstrong, General Services Jeffrey Hill, Public Works Greg Fenton, and back in the fray, Andy Richter, who came back as extra help. But the frontline contact with the homeowners was Catherine Vasquez, who is our Housing Supervisor in Community Development. And we came up with the idea of soliciting donations from county management, actually donated the money in the first place, and we brought Jose Luis Gonzalez, our Fair Housing Coordinator, who is a master at getting donations. I took him from Dina Murphy, and he had done the Holiday Cottage, and Deanna Raval, who is my OSS for Community Development, and they went far beyond my, the original idea of a Welcome Basket, and they received this donation from IKEA for $1,500 worth of baskets and other sorts of things. And then a variety of county management employees donated funds. Dina Murphy actually donated toys and things for the children, and I am just really thrilled that we could not only give these people a home, but make them feel welcome on the move-in days. And I wanted to give an opportunity, since Catherine and Jose and Dina have been actually out there welcoming, just give them a couple of moments to say what this project meant, and, and then allow your board to acknowledge them. Catherine, would you like to go first?
The families in the community of Erskine Fire went through something that was more devastating than I think Kern County's experienced in a lifetime, and hopefully never will. But I am honored and grateful to be a part of helping to restore the community and to bring peace back to some of the homeowners who can now return home.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
I just want to add that when we delivered the items to the families, we were very, very touched and felt very honored that members of the community got together and brought them items, and it was a pleasure working with you, Mr. Gleason, because he was also there greeting the families, and they were very, very thankful and very appreciative. And every item in the bag, they really needed it, so, thank you.
May I ask, Chairman?
Absolutely.
Thank you. What's in the bag?
There's candy, cookies, towels, shampoo, conditioner, body wash, dishwashing soap, little carpet for the entrance of their home. We, when we went shopping, we bought items that we felt that they needed. And one item I, we forgot, and I wasn't really thinking, teepee. So note to self for next time, hopefully it won't occur again.
Very, how wonderful, thank you. Is that an extra bag? I'm, no, I'm kidding.
I think that's a bag.
We have one family we still need to provide them with a bag.
Thank you, so we recommend that you provide a teepee.
I know Supervisor Gleason definitely has comment on this item.
Right, it was a blast. It was one of the most rewarding experiences working with you guys that I've ever had, and not just this whole MHU process, but bringing humanity to this, to the structure, to this process of bringing these people back was truly remarkable, and you guys brought Jose your smile, and the way you approached the problem was wonderful. The contributions from IKEA, staff management, you guys, everybody coming together was truly remarkable, and thank you very much. I did want to talk about the toys, though, because the bag of toys was unbelievable, two monster bags of toys, I wish we had pictures of it, where they pull out these motorized trucks that a child could actually sit in and drive around the house. I mean, this was, we did not hold back anything, I mean, we went all out, and the smiles, and the, and the thankfulness, and the appreciation, and it was just a wonderful experience. I wish more people had an opportunity to enjoy what we enjoyed in the giving of those toys to those very needy people. So you guys, with, with air, and everybody else that was involved in this whole program, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's fantastic, and the requested action is to approve and authorize Chairman to sign a letter of appreciation.
Motion.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, great job, everyone, and great job Supervisor Gleason. Okay, next item on our agenda is item number six, determination of public convenience requests for removal or modification of a California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control condition for an existing type 20 off-sale package store beer and wine license, which presently prohibits beer or malt beverages in containers under one quart to be sold in units less than a six-pack at 609 Ming Avenue, Bakersfield. Ms. Oviette, please.
Thank you. Thank you. As noted, this is an existing type 20 beer and wine license, and the new owners of the Fairview Market at 609 Ming Avenue, which is across from the fairgrounds, has requested to ABC alcohol and beverage control that the condition be modified or removed. The condition specifically prohibits the sale of beer or malt beverages in individual containers which are less than one quart in size unless they're sold in a six-pack. The original license was limited in 2006 when it was issued, not just because of the proximity to the fairground, but the proximity to churches along this avenue, as well as the proximity The process by which this modification is, is done is they have sent us a letter, and we have provided you the letter and the original conditions that came from ABC in an addendum, which we provided to you. And they are asking your board for an opinion on whether you think this modification should be removed. We do have Mr. Porter from ABC here today to answer any questions. We have reviewed this based on the location. We have also done some research, and we have attached a study, or we have cited a study, which we can provide, that actually looked to see that preventing the sale of single container beer and malt beverages actually reduces criminal activity such as assaults and vandalism. This is a recent study that was just done in 2017, and we believe that this restriction should remain. The applicant has been apprised of this, the applicant meaning the owner of the license for Fairview Market. They are here today and may want to address your board. They did bring up their comments that other people along this street are also selling these types of singles. I would note that the reason this came to the attention of ABC is they were found in violation of this restriction, and that has engendered them asking that it be removed. We have looked at, there are other restrictions on the variety of uses along that avenue, including the nightclub. The fact that they are all not restricted to selling single malts, in the opinion of the Planning and Natural Resources Department, does not mean that we should suddenly remove this restriction. We would note that on page three, we have summarized for since 2015 to 17, all of the Sheriff's Department logs in regards to callouts. There were four theft incidences, which are cited as beer runs, essentially meaning that people are going in, stealing the beer, and then running out. Obviously, single sales of these types of, of containers are, make it easier to do that. So based on our information and our background, we are recommending that your board object to the removal or modification of this, of this restriction. And with that, that completes our presentation, and we are available for questions. We have also, if we are required to translate, we do have our supervising planner, Roque Nino, here who can translate if necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Oviette. This, this item is in District 5 Supervisor Perez, did you have any questions or comments before I open it to the public?
You know, no, I don't, well, I guess I do.
I had, I had a feeling.
Thank you. Director Oviette, I appreciate the consistency out of your department in dealing with these matters. This is a tough issue, as this county and your department is so pro-business and so open door to economic development and, you know, removing barriers to competition. And so it's tough, it's not an easy stance to take, but we have been consistent in these matters, and so that's compelling to me, and I want to say thank you for your consistency in thinking about how these small factors really impact the culture of a neighborhood and, you know, the larger commercial activity around this particular commodity. So I appreciate that, but I'd be very interested to hearing from the public.
Thank you Supervisor. I'll now ask if there's any member of the audience that would like to make comment on this item? If you'd like to make comment, please come forward.
This is Mr. Rios, he's the owner of the Fairview Market. He's come today to determine or to see what decision you're going to make on his case. He bought the market in 2006. He bought the market in 2006. So the person who sold him the market sold him the alcohol license as well. He says that the market was established in 1993, and that's exactly the way it is now. So two years later, ABC comes to him and says he cannot sell the individual beverages as he was doing. So he is petitioning to remove condition number six, so that he could sell, modify and/or delete to sell individual beverages.
He just wants to be able to sell individual alcohol, so that he could continue with the business. And sales are low at this moment.
He has photographs of nearby establishments that sell, that sell individual alcohol beverages. If he, if you want to provide to him, he'll provide it to you.
Thank you, Chairman. So how long have you been operating this market with this restriction in place?
He says 12 years he's been operating.
So for 12 years, you've had this restriction in place? Have you ever operated the business without this restriction in place? He says about six months that he has not been selling individual cans. Okay, I'm confused. So the individual, give me one moment here. Director Lorelei Oviette, can you just help me understand that issue, please?
Supervisor Perez, in addition, we do have Mr. Porter here from ABC. It might be appropriate to ask him what the disposition of this license and their investigation was.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Porter, thank you for being here and helping us understand this particular location and this store's relationship with ABC.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon.
Mr. Porter, may we have your first name for the record, please?
My name is Josh Porter.
Thank you.
I'm the supervisor for the Alcohol Beverage Control Bakersfield Office. On behalf of the Director's Office, I'm your representative today.
Thank you.
So I can certainly clarify a few things regarding this. Upon initial licensure of this location in 1994, the conditions that are still on the license today were imposed on that licensee as well. The ownership changed hands, those conditions followed. When Mr. Rios acquired the license in 2006, those same conditions were imposed on his license, which he was provided upon during the application process, given to him for his review, which, which he signed and acknowledged receipt of. Our hopes that licensees operate within compliance of those conditions. It sounds like in this case, maybe that wasn't always complied with. However, upon a unrelated investigation at the location, it was determined that Mr. Rios was in fact in violation of this specific condition.
So that you have documentation of that violation?
Yes.
Okay. Under what circumstances do you consider the removal of such a condition, hypothetically speaking?
Well, we take everything into consideration when this, when the request is submitted that was looked at upon initial licensure as well. And if we're satisfied that those concerns are no longer an issue, then we can possibly look at removal of the condition.
I see. And in this case, you reviewed the market circumstances that were in place in 1994, I presume, as the baseline. Has anything changed in any material way to impact your analysis of that particular operation and its necessary conditions?
No, at this point, I can see that nothing has changed. The, the residents are still in place. The consideration points, which we were going to refer to you as, the churches nearby are still there. So, and at that time, upon initial licensure in 1994, the application for issuance was in fact protested for issuance. I no longer have access to that file. It's since been purged.
Okay. To what degree do you, as a regulator, consider sales being down or economic realities in your ultimate conclusion?
Our conclusion is not based upon overall sales. Our conclusion is based upon the needs of the community, public safety, and an overall totality of what's going to be best for the community and the licensee as well.
Very good. And I, does somebody from your department take time to explain these realities to a licensure that, or licensee rather, that is requesting a modification that is then denied?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. I see Mr. Rios here appears to speak Spanish. Do you know if that conversation occurred and that he was explained why the conditions are in place and why you think they need to stay in place moving forward?
I don't think that I necess, I have a staff member that translated and communicated with Mr. Rios as far as his compliance with the conditions right now and the process to remove them. I can't say to you right now that she explained why they were placed on the license back in, in 1994.
Okay, got it. But this process has been conveyed to Mr. Rios and your reasoning and the justification for your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It's very helpful. I appreciate your time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may Supervisor Perez, in reality, their process is not complete. They are, they have given us an extension of time for, for ABC to take their final action until they get your recommendation.
I see.
However, I will note that they did provide in Spanish the letter that was provided to the county. That letter was provided in Spanish from ABC to Mr. Rios. So at this point, ABC has not taken an action yet until they hear your recommendation.
I see. Very helpful. Thank you. That answers all of my questions.
Thank you Supervisor Perez. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to make comment? Please come forward and state your name.
My ward is District Three, I guess. I'm Mr. Maggert.
Please, please come forward to the microphone. If you could say your name for us again.
David Escalante. I have been a resident of Kern County since my birth. So since 1994, I can tell you from that side of town, that side of town has completely declined. So that would explain why there has been a decrease in his business. And I just don't think as a business owner, my family have owned businesses, and we have had to change locations to increase our business. I don't think taking one single item out of his store is going to, it will, I guarantee you, it will not, working in law enforcement. Taking beer is not going to change their crime rate. If any of you are familiar with that area, if you drive down there, there's crime going on 24/7. There are bars around there that you guys don't even know about because they're in people's houses. Believe me, it's on Facebook. So taking this man's business, his livelihood, to support his family because somebody had an incident there, and then somebody went and said, oh, he's in noncompliance, that's holding him accountable for somebody else's issue. And I don't think that's fair.
The testimony we received is that this particular store, under his leadership, management, and ownership, was out of compliance
Yes, I understand.
with a restriction that was in place. So he would then be, being held accountable for his own actions, not for somebody else's actions.
But then my also, my concern with that as well is him being Hispanic. He doesn't speak English very well. And seeing children, as I have volunteered, having trouble learning Spanish to English and the translation and communication through that, it's really hard to grasp the concept that's being spoken. And so my, I can, my concern is, was he fully aware? Was he fully aware and cognitive, cognizant of what was being told to him? How in-depth was this conversation was? So I would just ask you to please relook at this because it doesn't sound like it was a very full investigation. So I just, I think it should be relooked at. And you should have really more community members speak out. Because I know several people who are around, who live around there, who would come and say, no, telling him to stop selling beer isn't going to solve your problems. Not at all.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for any additional comment or action.
Chairman, if I could just clarify for the record, the action before your board is not to revoke anything or take anything away from the Fairview Market. Your action today is merely to voice an opinion to ABC that the restriction should not be lifted. So your action today will not take away his license, add any information to any investigation that's going on, or otherwise change his operation, except that we will not remove the restriction if your board votes yes. You will object to removing that. So to clarify the record, you are not taking any action against his license or otherwise closing him down or doing any of the kinds of things that the last comment are objected to, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oviette. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Like I said earlier, these issues are always tough. They involve the, you know, economic hopes of business owners. And we have been very, very consistent that where ABC, who are the experts in this matter, who have a whole host of factors and conditions that they think about what is appropriate in terms of alcohol sales, they are the experts and they have lots of experience in managing and regulating this particular type of business. And so as difficult as it is, the reality is, ma'am, to address your issue directly, whatever was communicated or was not communicated between this store owner and the previous seller is an issue between this owner and the previous seller, based on that contract and that sale that occurred however many years ago, when the business initially changed hands. So that issue is not before us. Whether he understood that or not is not an issue that we have any jurisdiction or control over. The only thing before us now is whether or not we maintain the status quo. This is one of the reasons I asked Mr. Porter to please help us understand if any of the factors have changed since the time of the initial declaration of what was critical in making this particular limitation. And so really what's before us today is whether or not we will keep the status quo. The business, of course, stays open. Alcohol sales remain in place. The question is whether or not individual sales will be allowed of individual units, one beer, for example. They tend to be easier to steal. They tend to be, lead to a lot of loitering around an area as folks who buy one at a time are more likely to loiter around a business than folks that tend to buy a six-pack or larger. It's just the nature of that purchasing culture. So with that said, I really wish you the best of luck, sir, and all the successes that you can manage in that business and hopefully more. But I do not see a reason, as presented today, to change the conditions as listed or to change the status quo. So I would make a motion at this time on staff's recommendation. I appreciate the board and Chairman indulge.
Thank you Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you. I want to make sure I understood that I might have misunderstood some testimony earlier. Did the gentleman who is, Mr. Rios, who is appealing this recommendation, did he say that there are competitors on the same street that are currently selling single units of alcohol?
Perhaps we should ask Mr. Nino to answer that question, since he was interpreting for us.
Ask Mr. Rios a question again, and he said yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rios. So my question for Mr. Porter is, are those other establishments on Ming Avenue or in that general area also prohibited from selling singles?
No, they are not. And I brought conditions on some of those licenses as well. Within 1,000 feet radius of the location, I have conditions for seven locations. And none of the seven have that condition.
And do they not have that condition because they don't meet the requirements of a certain setback from a school or church or other park, things like that?
Some of those, they do have those as reasonings why the conditions were put on. But as far as at that time during that investigation of these specific licenses, I can't specifically say why what was put on or what was left off or what reason, depending on who was conducting the investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer that?
Yeah, well, what is essential to me is that everybody went into this with their eyes wide open, or they should have, and they knew exactly what license they were purchasing when they bought them.
Yes.
To ask us to, to loosen or degrade the level of protection, so to speak, for that neighborhood because somebody's having an economic issue is a question that I guess we're about to answer. But that's, it's very different to me that if, if other people are in, are in compliance with the rules that they purchased, that's what's essential to me, just like he. I believe he should be held accountable to the set of rules under which, the premise under which he purchased his.
Right. If I, if I could just add one thing. Each one of these investigations is obviously conducted independently from the other. And depending upon the circumstances and concerns that are brought forward by community, law enforcement, border supervisors, whatever it may be, what those circumstances are, they're addressed accordingly with the conditions. So just to go back to what, what I mentioned earlier, upon initial licensure in 94, issuance of the license was protested. I don't know what reasons they were protested for, but that, I'm sure that weighed heavily on the conditions that were imposed.
And is that the file that's been purged?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we, Ms. Oviette, I want to ask you, will, will Mr. Nino explain to Mr. Rios the action we just, we just took in case he has any questions?
Yes, he will, Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Nino, I want to thank you for your assistance today. And Mr. Porter, thank you for being here. The next item on our agenda is item 22. This is an item under the County Administrative Office. This is a public hearing to consider the possible election of the County of Kern to become a groundwater sustainability agency for portions of the Kern County sub-basin subject to notice filed by the Coelho-Kern Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I'll ask, Mr. Alsop, will Mr. Christensen be making this presentation or is this, is this yours? I don't, since I don't see him, I'm going to, I'm going to assume it's you.
Mr. Christian, Christensen is not here. Wouldn't be his report. Mr. Hall from County Council is going to take his place today.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hall, how are you?
Good afternoon, Chairman. This item before you today is really the continuation of an action that your board took on May 9. At that time, you entered into a joint powers agreement with the Coelho Water District. The purposes of that joint powers agreement was to act as a GSA for the area covered inside the Coelho Water District and the area of land to the east, which generally is considered to be white area. This is now the hearing to formalize that GSA filing with the state. It is simply that. If you want me to get too much further into GSAs at this stage, since how we've done half a dozen of them or so. With that, your recommended action is that you open the public hearing, receive comment, consider the election to be a GSA for that portion of land. After comments received, it's recommended that you close the public hearing, adopt the resolution attached here, too, including the sequel findings that this action is exempt from sequel, from further sequel review pursuant to California Secret Guidelines Sections 15061B3 and 15378B5. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. Mr. Hall, could you, this question, I think, has only come up with this particular GSA formation there. And I've heard from a couple of landowners, I think I know the answer, but I'd like to get that question asked and answered on the record if I could. Some of the landowners have been, lack of a better word, upset that they weren't involved in the, more involved in the discussion with Coelho, between Coelho and the county and the formation of this GSA. If those landowners chose to not be in the GSA, could they, they can be removed from this GSA. But then they would become part of the, we would have to, in order for the basin to be completely covered, we would have to include them in the current groundwater authority GSA. Is that accurate?
In theory, yes. So what you're doing now So what you're doing now--
How about practically?
Well, and let me go through it. So remember, we've got till July 1 to get all of our GSAs lined up so that we have groundwater sustainability agency coverage for the entire basin. After July 1, DWR has informed us that they will allow us to manipulate the GSAs a little bit. So if you're asking, could you take an island inside this Coelho JPA GSA and remove that island and place it into the JPA that we are entering into with Kern Groundwater Authority and have it regulated by that GSA, the answer is yes.
That presents a host of problems.
It does create a host of problems, and we would want to do it soon because of the process and the science and the reports that will be put together over the next 24 months as we get to the point of having a GSP for the basin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Mr. Hall, I'll now open this up to the public. Are there any members of the audience that would like to make comment on this item? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is David Kahn. I'm with Consoys &amp; Conway Law Firm, and we represent a grower named Chad Hathaway. Mr. Hathaway was interested early on in Sigma because of how it's going to affect his growing, as most growers are. Because of that, he, together with other growers in this so-called white area, formed kind of a loosely knit stakeholder group, which has been meeting with the county and has met well over the last year, probably at least half a dozen times, with county staff and/or supervisors. They were surprised to learn that this proposed action was taking place, as during those regular meetings, they were not advised that they were soon to be incorporated into a GSA that was to be managed by Coelho Water District rather than them having a seat at the table. They had felt comfortable working with the county in their stakeholder group, but now are concerned again that that line of communication wasn't as good as they had thought it was and are now more concerned, as they've recently seen the JPA, which indicates that the GSA is going to be managed completely by the directors of Coelho Water District. Now, again, these are, Mr. Hathaway specifically is very concerned that this lack of communication is indicative of what is to occur once the Coelho-Kern Groundwater Sustainability Agency has been formed and that the issues in those white areas will not be considered under the final groundwater plan to be developed again by the Coelho Board of Directors. They desire to be, Mr. Hathaway specifically desires to be on a stakeholder group and that there be one formed that works together and advises Coelho on behalf of those white areas that are going to be forced in with Coelho. And more to that point, we'd like a reason why the decision to form the GSA with Coelho as opposed to the county managing this area. We'd also like guidance on how the GSA, and more specifically, the white areas within this GSA will be governed, what's to assure Mr. Hathaway that he doesn't sit on, he doesn't sit on the Coelho Board of Directors and can't sit on the Coelho Board of Directors, what's to give him a voice and a seat at the table? Will there be an advisory group of landowners to work with Coelho? And finally, we request that the GSA ultimately governing these white areas form such a technical advisory board and be involved in the formation of the GSP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Would staff like to respond to those comments at this time?
Chairman, a couple of quick comments. This JPA itself has been approved, and it was approved by the board on May 9th. Some of what I'm hearing requested is that there be provisions in this JPA related to committees and that, and maybe more establishment of what those committees would look like in the JPA. At this stage, given where we are, it really is not possible to do that and meet the July 1 deadline. That doesn't mean that those committees couldn't be formed after today's action. It just means that they can't be done and incorporated into this JPA before July 1. I would also remind your board that this JPA is not a one-way ticket. This board can leave the JPA if it wants, believe, I'd have to go through and find it exactly, believe it's on 60 days' notice. So, for example, if you are a landowner in the white area and you believe you're not getting a fair shake from this GSA, this board could take that into consideration and leave this JPA. And in doing so, therefore, pull the regulatory authority over that white area away from Coelho Water District, and it would remain yours. So I guess that's sort of the best way of saying it, is at the end of the day, if this isn't really panning out, you leave the JPA, those white areas come with you. They're not stuck there forever.
Okay. I understand that we could pull out of the JPA. However, you said the deadline is July 31st. July, July, oh, excuse me, 1st, okay. Well, that definitely compresses the time schedule. Do we have any other, Mr. Kahn, did you have another?
Can I respond just with one?
Yeah, I'll let you do that, and then I think we might have one other speaker.
Okay. The idea of the county being able to leave the JPA, we're concerned again that there's, where's the oversight? Who's going to be advising the county? Operations of the GSA are being turned over to Coelho, and so where's that backstop and that coverage?
Do you have a suggestion or a request?
Well, I guess a suggestion would be, again, that maybe the county put in place a stakeholder group to represent it with Coelho. And again, ideally, they would have had a vote, but I guess that ship has sailed at this time.
Yeah, that's, seems to be our dilemma right now. Mr. Hall, do you have a response to that?
Well, I think two things. First, yes, this JPA doesn't provide a specific vote for the county, but again, you, in essence, have the Russian vetoes we've talked about before, because if Coelho GSA is doing something you do not like, you simply leave the GSA. So you have a very strong vote in that respect. As for stakeholder involvement and what those committees would look like, as GSAs move forward and they develop GSPs, those meetings will have to occur. There will be many public hearings, many discussions as these things move forward. This GSA, or excuse me, this JPA incorporates some provisions in it, which are going to make sure that those types of communications happen, that this isn't going to be something that's going to show up two years from now and you're going to have a GSP that you've never seen affecting your land. So at this stage, do we need to change anything in this document? I don't think we need to, to accomplish what I hear is being requested, which is more involvement.
And let me ask you one final question. If we don't approve this, if this JPA is not in place, this GSA, rather, is not in place by the 1st of July, then is the, our entire sub-basin then not in compliance? I mean, is this the last component?
The state has said two things on that. At one point, and depending on when you talk to them, they'll tell you different things. At one point, they've said that that area of the basin would be stuck in probation. At other times, they've said they would step in and put the whole basin into probation. In essence, the basin couldn't get along to cover everything, so we're going to step in and take over everything.
Is this the last piece?
Well, there are going to be many GSAs moving forward.
Understand.
For that particular area and that particular land in there, this is the last piece. Now, other areas, GSAs, Henry Miller, Semitropic, and others are being formed, but for the land that's inside this particular GSA, this is the last piece of that.
Is this, let me ask it a different way. Is this the last piece where the county is involved specifically? Where there are white areas that we've agreed to represent?
Yes, in representing white areas. We are going to be entering into MOUs with other water districts, but those won't really have white areas in them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kahn? I'll give you another opportunity if you have anything else to say.
The last comment is, Mr. Hathaway is not necessarily concerned with being governed by Coelho or being in this GSA. It's that he wears the assurance that his interests will be considered. He's very, very concerned about that. And while the JPA may give the county the ability to withdraw, I believe that'll be subject to Department of Water Resources and/or the State Water Resource Control Board allowing that redrawing of GSAs after the June 30 deadline.
Well, as far as Mr. Hathaway's concerned and all the other landowners in the white area, they have a commitment from this board that we will, that we will represent them. And, Mr. Hall, is that not correct?
At this stage, the white areas in Kern County on the west side are either inside the White Wolf Sub Basin and that JPA has been established and is moving forward as a GSA. It's really a sub-sub basin. For the Kern-Telarae Sub Basin, all of the white areas are going to fall within Kern Groundwater Authority or this Coelho JPA at this stage. And they are being represented by the county in that degree.
Thank you. That was what I was getting, that's why I was there. Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you.
Do we have, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Kahn, Supervisor Couch has a question.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Sorry. A comment and a question. I would like, I would just ask if you would carry the message to your client that it's not our intention to abandon him and have him fend completely for himself. You brought up a couple of issues, two or three, it sounded like, and my question is, have you or has Mr. Hathaway had discussions about those issues with Coelho? I ask that because their director, their board are reasonable people. We have a very good relationship with them, and I'm curious if you've had those discussions with them and what they said.
I have not yet had--
Has Mr. Hathaway had that, done that?
He has emailed, but I don't know that he's had his questions answered yet. That's not a comment on Coelho. I just think--
Understand.
This has happened rather quickly, as far as he's concerned.
Thank you.
He just learned about this on Friday, and so, for whatever reason.
Supervisor Gleason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's go with my brainstorming statement. So we're going to form a GSA with Coelho, and there's going to be two voting blocks on that board. It's going to be Coelho, and the Kern County Board of Supervisors will have a vote within that GSA on actions pertaining to GSP development.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair. Actually, no. At this stage, the, this JPA provides all voting structure with the board members of the Coelho Water District. With that said, you always have this trump card in your back pocket of leaving the JPA, so you do, in essence, have a vote, even though it's not--
Yeah, but the vote is one-way ticket.
It's a one-way ticket. You leave and--
And so I understand the concerns about participating, ensuring certain landowners has, or one landowner, whom we were talking about, have a seat at the table. I think what the argument is and the discussion is, how do we get this GSA to understand that this landowner is outside the purview of that, does not right now have a clearly articulated way to have a positive vote and decisions being made by this GSA, other than to walk?
Well, Supervisor Gleason through the chair again. I think we might want to look at Section 12.06 of the JPA. It's participation in the GSP development. This section provides that interested parties are going to be able to take and get their input and review the GSP as it's putting together. This, unlike some JPAs, which might have committees called out in them, it doesn't do that. That's not really what the purpose of a JPA is itself. But whether or not, in working with Coelho over the next six months or so, or actually six weeks, because this thing needs to really get moving, committees are established, is not really the matter before the board now. Participation is guaranteed by this JPA. And the JPA, which was adopted in May 9th, is really the cornerstone document of what's happening today, which is just the formation of the GSA, which accompanies that JPA.
Thank you.
I, I mean, the fact that Mr. Kahn's client just learned of this on Friday, I mean, is it fair to say there's a communication breakdown between us and at least one landowner in the white area?
Chairman, I was not involved in any discussions related to Coelho and landowners out there, or frankly, any of the other landowners in white areas. Those were done with the CAO's office, and unfortunately, as we speak, Alan Christensen is in Ridgecrest doing interviews for our GSA out there.
I know we have at least one other member of the audience who would like to speak. Supervisor Perez, do you want to weigh, or do you want to speak? Would you like to speak now?
I would just like to say that this is quite shocking to me to hear this from this particular group that has been making their rounds to the supervisors for the better part of a year. I know this isn't your fault, but I'm really quite shocked at the lack of communication to a group that has been very actively engaged, that got themselves together, has come around to the fifth floor, have made their rounds multiple times, have expressed their concern, have demonstrated openly they trust the county over the state. And so to hear that basic information was not conveyed to this group in particular, given how active engaged and how out in front of these issues they were, I just don't understand that. I'm sure you can't explain why that occurred, but if you could convey that concern, I just don't know how that could happen.
Supervisor Perez, through the chair, I, as I got a call this morning about this, I too was shocked, because the Coelho JPA, I've known about this arrangement for about six months, and I've been told throughout that six months that everybody was on board. So I was kind of taken aback, like, okay. So I don't know if maybe there was just a miscommunication, maybe, I don't know. I can't really answer. But I knew, though, this has been in the process for six months, so, you know, I can't really speak much more to that.
I--
It's striking to me, such a breakdown of communication. I'm not sure what the remedy is here today, given our timeline, frankly, but, you know, this is a group that has been incredibly engaged and has, you know, helped us understand some of the nuances of what is an incredibly complicated, evolving set of policies that are going to impact us in many ways that are difficult to even comprehend at this stage, I think. So, once again, not on you, Mr. Hall, but wow, that's pretty disappointing. Thank you.
Yeah, I share that sentiment. Unfortunately, the timeline, I don't think, is going to allow us to do anything but move forward unless there's some other recommendation from the board. But I'm incredibly frustrated that there is a loose end like this with this particular GSA. Sir, would you like to come forward and address the board?
Tim Lovely, McPherson Oil and McPherson Operating Company. Actually, was the phone call this morning to Mr. Hall, and through him, we were actually able to finally get a copy of the JPA. So we just got that this morning at like 10 o'clock, when he directed to me to where to find it. There's been a number of us monitoring this issue and working with ad hoc committees and trying to figure out, this is a new issue for all of us, including the board, and we've definitely all wanted to move forward together. You've covered a lot of the questions that we've had and are asking the same things. I'm glad to hear that. The issue is, the one that hasn't been brought up is, is Coelho has been able to expand now their authority through a GSA by two-thirds. So when you look at the map on the last page of the JPA, you really understand how much is in there. And we are not members of Coelho, and we're not in their water district. How do we become members of the board? How do we have that influence outside of the one trump card that you have to pull out of everything, which is not the card any of us would want to use? We're not sure if this is good for us or bad for us, because we're just really learning of it. The other side of this is that this board, Coelho, has the ability to establish bonds, fees, and requirements for the landowners in this area. That's a significant issue, that we don't have any opportunity outside of the one to remove ourselves from that through your actions. Those are very huge issues for landowners in that area, and there are a lot more that we'd definitely like to be here, but again, we're just learning of this. And we've been looking for this JPA MOU, I have personally, for about three weeks. So this is truly surprising. And we've talked to Coelho in the past about potential uses of produced water. They have our phone number. So where this is, or where we go from here, is this isn't a good start. And if there's a way to delay this to help educate some of the property owners in a short period of time, that would be a great effort. We'd really appreciate-- We'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alsop and Mr. Hall, we have, first of all, Madam Clerk, this is the sixth. We have, what, three more meetings between now and July 1st?
Yes, sir. The board meets on June 13th, June 20th, and June 27th.
Okay. Sir, did you have a comment on this? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, I'm David Hampton. I'm the Assistant General Manager at Coelho Water District. We understand this is a frustrating process. Sigma is going to reshape how things are done in California. Our two most prized economies here, ag and oil, and that's going to change over the next decade, few decades here. We want to ensure the board that we have every intention of establishing advisory committee and working with everyone out there. It's, the whole area is a concern for everyone in that area, especially Coelho Water District. We've been working with the county, trying to get that established. And our cooperation with the county, we understand they have the jurisdiction over the white areas. And so, our negotiations, if you will, or our discussions have occurred with the county. And to be able to have these discussions with every landowner out in the white areas is just not a reasonable way to go individually at this time, because we've got to get, we've got this deadline we got to meet. And so, we hope we can move forward and establish a GSA that everyone's happy with, everyone that can participate in a satisfactory level. And we certainly have every intention of working with everybody in the GSA, the folks within the Coelho Water District and also folks out in the white areas. Their economic viability is important to Coelho. And obviously, the landowners and the agriculture in the Coelho Water District is important also.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. I'd like to know if this board is interested in having some language inserted into the agreement that establishes an advisory committee and how it would be comprised before we do move forward. We do have three weeks to do so, but I'd be interested in my colleagues' opinion on that. Supervisor Perez has punched in, and, well, everybody's punched in now. Okay, Supervisor Perez, you're first.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Thank you for being here, really. I really appreciate it. Have you guys had a chance to meet and sit down and, you know, has that occurred?
We know Chad pretty well. And, you know, we have, as was mentioned earlier, have exchanged emails. His emails were the nature of him being surprised to learn of the formation of the GSA. And his questions as to, his questions were the nature of why he didn't get to participate in those negotiations. So, did try to explain, you know, what I did just a few seconds ago, and that, you know, it's a large, it's a huge undertaking, and we were negotiating with, we were having discussions with the Kern County staff.
Sure. Okay, thank you. What about the vote issue that you can certainly understand folks with significant economic investments have a concern about ultimately, at the end of the day, influencing through a vote, the process? Was that not considered? Is that off the table? I mean, where?
No, no, it certainly was considered. It was something that we discussed with Alan and the consultants he had in the room as to how voting would be structured, how that would handle. I think there was, in that negotiation, I keep calling it negotiation, but in the discussions and the meetings that we had, there was a comfort level that our interests are aligned. We want the same goal. We want to make sure we can get everyone as much water as they can, as they need, and have everyone continue their economic viability.
So, what do you perceive as broke down from where you were there to where we are today? What happened?
Um.
It's complicated. This is immense and over my head, certainly. So, I appreciate that.
Yeah. It's, this process is huge. And outreach is a very critical part of this process. I think most folks believe that the outreach to the individual landowners really starts after the GSAs are formed. GSAs are formed by folks that are authorized as far as public agencies that are allowed to do that and participate. It's not set up so that individual landowners or other entities, non-qualifying entities can set up these GSAs and form these. And so, it starts with the overlying agencies that have that ability, and that's where we're starting. And then, from there, we start the outreach.
Very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Gleason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I'm not confident that we are ready right now to move forward with this particular effort, because one of the foundational principles of Sigma is public trust and cooperation and collaboration. And I think we've got a little, we've got something we need to work on here that hasn't quite been finally tuned to the point where we need it to be. And I don't know how much time we need. So, we got a couple of options. I think we can do, I think we can change, get together, and have some language changes to satisfy these white owners, white landowners who are not adequately given meaningful participation in this GSA. Is there an opportunity to adjust some, make some language changes in this GSA?
Given the late date that we're at in relationship to July 1, and the fact that Kern Groundwater Authority has already drawn its maps and has filed, we would be, we would run into a problem of having an area that's not covered on maps. With that said, I don't know that you want to change the JPA, because the JPA has the structure for these committees. So, it might be more of, okay, we've done the GSA, we've done the JPA, here's how we're going to move forward from here, and here's our next agreement stage, which is, as you're familiar with in Indian Wells Valley, bylaws, which have committees in them. So, that might be the next stage we're at, regardless of how long we do that, whether we do it in the JPA or through something called bylaws, something like that. We need to be moving quickly with that, though.
Right. That's what I was thinking. In the Indian Wells Valley, we satisfied the requirement, or the need of meaningful participation by white-space landowners by creating various committees and adjusting the JPA with bylaws, which steer our, the construction of our organization. We can do that here. We can add some bylaws or something that's going to mandate that we create advisory committees or some avenue for meaningful participation from all players within the geographical bounds of that GSA. Is that correct?
Supervisor Gleason through the chair. Yes, we can. And in fact, you might be interested to know that this GPA is probably 90% identical to the one from Indian Wells Valley.
Oh, those poor guys. Actually, it was a very successful enterprise, and we got through it. But it was very challenging, very challenging. But we did satisfy the needs of our farmers in, our ag folks in the white space. With the way, the process we went through, we achieved satisfaction to those ag folks. So, we can still take that same movement forward on this thing?
We absolutely could.
And still make our timelines?
Yes. You're going to get, if you file a GSA, you get that done by July 1, you've still got time to put together your committee structures and get that in process.
And by filing and doing that way, we're guaranteeing meaningful participation to these landowners?
Yes, sir, we are.
I think that's what you're looking for, is guarantees that you will have meaningful participation in the development of the GSP. Is that a correct statement?
In the development.
Could you come to the microphone so everybody can hear you?
I can yell louder.
In the development and the operation of it, that's what we want. If it works with Coelho, you know, we just want to be engaged, and we want to know what we're getting into, so we can be more informed.
We are, this board is also concerned and committed to giving you that, makes you sure that we can give you, help you in that quest. I know we are. I mean, I just know we are. So, we can do that, we can achieve that by doing how? What is the process moving forward to achieve those objectives?
Supervisor Gleason through the board. I think the first process would be to move forward with today's items, so we can get the GSA filed and get the state intervention cloud behind us. Then move forward with Coelho through either a side agreement, an amendment to this JPA, whichever we want to, some sort of finalized agreement, which sets forward a committee structure and a participation schedule that this board is comfortable with.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Hampton, my last thought, my last comment is, you're right in what you're saying, that Sigma is going to change the way we do business. And it may be, in certain instances, significant change. And it's absolutely critical that, I think you learned, we learned, and everybody's learning today, that communication upfront and early is absolutely essential to our continued success. So, I encourage you to take that back to your board of directors. I'm sure they're aware of it, and we need to work on it. Everybody needs to work on it. So, thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. I agree with where you're heading and how important it is that we have these property owners engaged and participating. But I don't think I agree with moving forward today on this. I think we need, we need at least a week, I don't know if the board members agree, to make sure that that discussion happens before we pull this final trigger. Supervisor Magg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we do any harm if we put this off a week to try to give opportunity for the parties to talk? Do we do any harm?
Supervisor Magg through the chair. We do not, as we do it, though, we want to, the way we do it will be somewhat of a consideration. We need to make sure that we are continuing this hearing so that we don't run into a foul of the publication requirements of Sigma.
Do we do any good by putting it off a week?
I'm not sure that we do, because you have this Russian veto power, and Coelho's going to take you seriously when you're saying we want these committees. That's, I mean, you can leave after we get down past, you know, say it's July 15th, and they're balking at the committees, we can leave and take that area over as our own GSA. So, at the end of the day, from a pre-early legal perspective, you're not harming yourself if you move forward.
It seems to me that if we don't cause any harm by putting it off a week, it's appropriate to put it off a week. What's the most important to me about these situations is that the process is followed, because the process guarantees all the players of having the right opportunities to voice and have an effect on the consequence. So, in the, if we put it off a week, which I'm suggesting that we do, I'd like to be assured when we come back next week and have our, and pull the trigger on this, let me back up one step. Too much is at stake to delay this to the point that it imperils everything else. We need to move forward, because many, many harms would be consequent if we don't do that. So, I want to move forward. But if putting it off a week for everybody to have an opportunity to have some more conversation, I'm okay with that. But I'd like to be assured, I'd like to be assured that the process has been followed. And is the process established by Sigma? Is the process established by the Water District? Or is the process established by the county as to who will be notified? Most of my experience in matters that are anywhere near this have to do with land use and land development, not with water. And land use, if you're within a certain boundary and affected by this, you get notified. And it's documented that you were notified. So, I want to make sure the process was followed. I'm not saying anybody is a bad person here, bad guy here. Nobody was irresponsible. I don't know any of those things. But I want to make sure whatever the process is, was followed. And can you assure us of that if this comes back in a week, that that process was followed?
Supervisor Magg through the chair. The process for notification of filing a GSA and for the hearing is inside Sigma, it requires what amounts to a two weeks' worth of publication of the notice. That occurred. So, publication of notice occurred. Beyond that, there is no requirement in Sigma, unlike in planning issues, where you find people in a certain area and give them notice or 218.
So, there's no requirement of the district or the county or anyone else to, I'm asking a question, not stating a fact. Was there any requirement for them to send written notice? Was the mere publication of the matter sufficient?
Under Sigma, publication is sufficient. And I think that's partly because, as you can imagine, this basin is so large, the mailing of those notices would have been astronomically expensive.
So, I suspect for the Water District, I want to be very careful that I'm not speaking about something that I don't know about. So, I'm not criticizing the Water District. But as we move forward, there is so much at stake for all the players that are participating that it might be the right thing to do to go beyond the legal requirement of what kind of notice is given. And if we keep in mind that we might need to go further than required by the law, I think that would serve all the parties as we go forward. So, I'm of a mind that this can take a week and am happy to be supportive of a motion to that effect if others agree.
Thank you, Supervisor Magg. Supervisor Couch?
One comment. Mr. Hampton, thank you for being here today. And I don't want the public to get the wrong impression, and I don't think anybody meant to give the wrong impression. But the fact that you and your district are stepping up to do, perform this function, we appreciate. And I don't know how to say this delicately, but you may be better off with them than you are with us. And you may not know that just yet, but they've, and this is no offense to our esteemed counsel here or Alan, but they've got a lot on their plate with the entire county. And Coelho's dealing with a, just a smaller area, and they've got expertise in areas that we clearly don't. I'm perfectly fine if we take a week, but what are we asking our staff to do in the next few days and come back with exactly? Mr. Hampton, could you step up for just a second? A quick question. On the off-chance that you've got a board meeting in the next couple of days, and you can add this as an emergency item, is that even, you don't have that, do you?
We do have a board meeting.
Do you really?
Thursday.
Do you have time to notice this particular item and discuss it?
We do have, it is on the agenda.
It is?
Yeah. So, there is an agenda item there to discuss.
The same item that we are currently would be approving, you will be approving as well?
No, we've already approved it. We've already had our hearing. So, it's, the JPA we're forming is a two-part JPA, so it was contingent on the county finishing their end.
Okay.
And so, to be honest with you, we thought this was going to move forward also.
I thought you had been honest with this up until now.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Yeah. So, it is, now it's a fixture on our agenda. So, it's something that we discuss at every.
Okay. So, Mr. Hall, will you and, can you speak for Alan? Can you guys be available to attend that meeting and advocate what you've heard on our behalf?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, if I can ask a question. What time is your meeting?
It's at 9:00, Thursday morning.
I believe we are in another emergency meeting, me and Alan, on GSAs at that particular time on Thursday. That meeting is at 11:00. So, we could do something to be there at 9:00 AM in Coelho.
Okay. And we can have it moved up if we need to.
And let me also take this chance. I think if we're going to move this, moving it one week, we might be better to move it two weeks so that we have time to get stuff done. That's still the 20th of June, which gives us 10 days before the filing deadline of July 1, and still gives us some time to do something before the agenda process.
And with one more meeting subsequent to that, in case there was any need to postpone again, we'd have two, we could have two bites of the apple. Not saying we want to, but we could.
Yes.
So, would that be, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. This is a pretty important subject. And so, if, you know, pending the availability of our directors, we can call a special board meeting if we need to.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, I've heard, can I make a motion? Would it be appropriate to make a motion to continue this hearing to June 20th?
Supervisor Couch through the chair, yes, it would.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Supervisor Gleason?
Just want to make double sure that that's not going to interfere with any Sigma requirements that interfere with that deadline by the, what we're doing.
Assuming we are able, Supervisor Gleason through the chair, assuming we're able to approve this GSA filing on the 20th or the meeting thereafter, we would meet the July 1 deadline. Areas would be covered, and therefore, we would not have state intervention.
Thank you.
Supervisor Magg?
Thank you. I want to make it clear to your board that I intend to vote for this in two weeks. I'm only supporting us taking two weeks to work on this, to try to work out the concerns that people have. But there's so much at stake, I don't want your board to have any concern that I am not interested in proceeding the way we planned.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. Mr. Hampton, thank you very much. Mr. Hampton, thank you very much, as well as Mr. Khan. Still lovely, thank you for being here, appreciate it. And so we hope to be back in two weeks with, with everything wrapped up. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda will be item 35 under the County Administrative Office, Human Resources Division. This is a proposed memorandum of understanding with Kern Law Enforcement Association for bargaining units L and 8 expiring September 30th, 2017, and side letter agreement modifying deputy sheriff 1, 2 classification series. Now, who's going to start this off? Mr. Alsop?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Brown from my office will report on the side.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On May 9th, 2017, we presented an impasse in the KLEA negotiations to you. Your board directed the parties to meet again to further attempt reaching an agreement. The parties met on May 25th and I am pleased to report that we have reached a tentative agreement delivered to you today for approval. The agreement includes a short-term extension of the MOU through September 30th of this year, addressing one of the points of concern raised by the independently elected auditor controller during her payroll review this past January. Specifically, we have agreed to ensure that deputies do not receive overtime compensation and standby compensation at the same time when placed on standby to testify in court. Among the other changes are mostly cleanup items and an addition of uniform pay for the deputy, or district attorney investigators. Also, part of the agreement is a reconstruction of the deputy sheriff classification series. The proposed side letter before you would allow new deputies to promote to a higher salary range upon successful completion of their one-year probation period. This begins to address the difficulty the sheriff has faced recruiting and retaining deputy sheriffs. It also permits the sheriff's ability to move new deputies through field training sooner and possibly into critical vacant patrol assignments now covered by overtime, which has been an operational concern for many years. The side letter would reclassify 40 current deputies to the higher salary range upon the approval of this agreement and at the next pay period. A total estimated cost for an annual fiscal year is about $420,000 for that reclassification. Finally, although not before you today for approval, KLEA has agreed to the sheriff's proposal to move seven deputies from non-security assignments in the central receiving facility to fill other assignments currently filled by overtime. The seven control and desk assignments will be filled by civilian sheriff's aides. This change will save the sheriff over $800,000 and reduce personnel costs and overtime compensation. The total net savings to the county of this total agreement between the county and KLEA is about $400,000 annually and assists the sheriff's office in meeting its recommended budget reduction guideline for the following fiscal year. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve and authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding and side letter agreement with the Kern Law Enforcement Association for Bargaining Units L and 8 and direct the auditor controller, county clerk, county administrative officer, chief human resources officer, and the Kern County Employment Retirement Association to implement the changes. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Alsop, do you have anything else to add, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank Mr. Brown for his hard work on this. I also want to extend a special thank you to Mr. Kessler, who is the head of KLEA. I want to thank him and his entire leadership team for what I think is a great working relationship and something in our relationship I'm excited about going forward. I also want to thank the sheriff and all of his deputies for their service to our community and their sacrifices out on the streets protecting all of the county's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. I'll now ask if there are any members of the audience that would like to make comment Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Chairman Squidward, members of the board, David Kessler, president of Kern Law Enforcement Association. I'd also like to thank Ryan Alsop and Devin Brown for their hard work during this time and the board for giving the authority to come back to the table to renegotiate with us. Even though this does fix some of the problems, we still have some problems ahead of us to solve with pay and other issues that we're facing. But we continue to hope to have that two-way conversation with the board, with administration. We're also looking forward to Mr. Brown's outside-the-box thinking in coming together with members to solve the issues facing the department and the county and take ideas from them to address them. So we're looking forward to this partnership and we hope it continues. We have a lot of work ahead of us and I think together we could get through it. So I'd like to thank you and thank the team too.
Thank you and thank you for your leadership. Appreciate the working relationship. Do we have any comments from members of the board?
Motion on staff's recommendation.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Mr. Brown, great work. Mr. Alsop, thank you. Next item on the agenda is also under County Administrative Office, Human Resources Division, item 36, proposed new classifications titled Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Program Supervisor, salary range 66.0 and Senior Patients Rights Advocate, salary range 61.1 and proposed salary range increases, Family Advocate, classification from salary range 58.8 to 60.2 and Patient Rights Advocate, classification from salary range 60.1 to 60.2 effective June 10th, 2017. The fiscal impact, $1,500 annually. Mr. Brown, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This item is brought to you on behalf of the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department and Director Bill Walker. We've been working with his staff on these particular items and with the Service Employees International Union on approving these items. The first two items are new classifications. One is the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Program Supervisor, which is a supervisory level classification in a non-clinical role. The department has many programs that are non-clinical in nature, yet they lack somebody with a supervisor slash management role in this area. And so this classification would help fulfill that responsibility and need. And it would be a mid-management classification in the mid-management bargaining unit and the recommended salary range is 66.0, which is equivalent to the current clinical unit supervisor 1 classification. The other new classification is titled Senior Patient Rights Advocate. It's been, has been developed with the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department as a lead-level classification in what's called the Patients Rights Advocate Classification Series. It would be responsible for supervising the activities of subordinate staff and provide system advocacy for behavioral health clients and address more complex class cases than lower-level unit staff. And the proposed salary range is 61.1. The other two items being requested of your board today are salary range increases. The department currently has a recovery specialist position classification that is at the 60.2 salary range and their request is to increase the Family Advocate and Patients Right Advocate classifications to that salary range. This will allow Behavioral Health and Recovery Services staff to be able to transfer in between the two classifications and provide greater flexibility for departmental operations. The Family Rights Advocate is currently at, or Family Advocate is currently at a range of 58.8 and there are no current incumbents in that classification, so there's no cost increase specific to that change. The Patients Rights Advocate is just a half a percent below the proposed increase to a 60.2 and there are three incumbents in that classification, which amounts to the fiscal impact that you see before you. It is recommended that your board approve the creation of the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Program Supervisor Classification, the Senior Patient Rights Advocate Classification, and an increase in the salary range of the Family Advocate Classification from 58.8 to 60.2, and the Patient Rights Advocate Classification from 60.1 to 60.2, and refer the matter to the Human Resources Division to amend the department positions and salary schedule. And Director Walker is here to address any questions and I, of course, am available as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Walker, did you like to come up and make any comment on this item?
Actually, I thought Mr. Brown did an excellent job of presenting the positions.
Perfect.
The Family Advocate and the Patients Rights is really a cleanup with positions of similar, the recovery specialist are the same requirements, but slightly different pay scales. And the other two positions really go back to my explanation of the added positions last week, that we're doing more work that's required of us, that's managing plans, and so we needed supervisor-level position that isn't a clinician. And I'm available for any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to make comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker, I have a, Mr. Walker, I have a couple of questions. The, in the hierarchy of your organization, how far below the director level is the position of Family Advocate and the position of Patient Rights Advocate?
Supervisor Maggert through the chair. I don't know the numeric of it in terms of the salary numbers, but in terms of the hierarchy, you have the director, you have the deputy directors, then you have administrators, and then you have supervisors. And the Family Advocate actually would be like the same as a recovery specialist that would be under a supervisor, so that's about five tiers down.
Thank you. And with these proposed raises, there's a consequence in how much they're going to earn. Does that increase in compensation affect the margin that's necessary as a matter of our policy for those that are above them? So will there, what I'm asking is, will there be a chain reaction that will, okay, we're going to say that this, these people got a raise, now the people above them need to raise, and the people above them need to raise? Are there any implications like that?
Supervisor Maggert through the chair, absolutely not. That was part of the examination so that, that right now, the Family Advocate, the Patients Right Advocate, and the recovery specialist positions are at a similar level. The problem we had actually was that most of our staff, in the way it actually works, come in as recovery specialists and after being trained, they transfer into the, to the Patients Rights position and there was a slight drop in pay. And so this really just equalizes that pain field, but has no impact, there's no impaction because of-
Yeah, compaction is the word I was not remembering earlier. There's no compaction that results-
None at all.
Thank you. And next question, the money that's going to pay for these positions, does, is there any amount at all that comes from the general fund to pay for these?
Thank you for the opportunity for that clarification. Absolutely no money will come out of the general fund. These are all paid through state, federal, and other assigned categorical dollars under the mental health system.
And as I believe you explained this to me before, were the funds that provide for these positions to, and reclassifications, were those funds to be, to change down the line? You could always change the staffing that, that would follow that, could you not?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? And do we have a motion?
Motion on staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Very good. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda today, and so I'm going to make a request that we adjourn our meeting in honor of Kathy Kraus on her 10-year anniversary and to her entire staff.
So moved.
Passionately moved. Okay, second.
We're adjourned until Tuesday, June 13th at 9:00 AM.